We'll call this meeting of the Ways and Means Committee together today, Tuesday, April the 7th, 2015, at 4:05. Deanne, would you please call the room?
Corinna?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Lex?
Here.
Excuse us. Okay, we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes of March the 3rd, 2015.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, motion carries. At this time, we'll allow for public input. Anybody that'd like to address the Ways and Means Committee, please step to the podium, state your name, the issue that you'd like to speak on behalf of, and you have an opportunity to address Ways and Means. Seeing no one's coming forward, under our next order of business, under petitions and communications, we have from the Court Administrator, Pilot Project with Court Innovations.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Mr. Mead?
Hi, thank you for the invite, Tom. I have with me today the Honorable Dawn Klyde, who are District Judge, who spearheaded this pilot project, and MJ Cartwright, who's the CEO of Court Innovations. She'd like to just do a brief demonstration of some of the slides that the people see, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Online. MJ, go.
Thanks. So, in your packets, you were presented with the five, and this is really meant to take you through how the system works. The best way that I found to do this is go through it. And when you do an online case review, the whole aspect is to expand the court, to recruit more people to interact with the court. And so, for example, if you take that first step, where the defendant hops onto the system, presents basically the system, then checks that eligibility, and that person sees if they really can use the system. And then, if the defendant wants to say he has a request, a case review, that case review goes into our system. And if it's a case that's a civil infraction, the prosecutor will look at the document and something, and then it goes on to the judge or magistrate. If it's a warrant, it goes right into the judge or magistrate to call on how to process the evidence of a case, a defendant to appear warrant. And the benefits that you get across the county include efficiencies in the time, it saves the court and the resources and manpower, the quality of the judicial and prosecutorial discretion is still there, because this really does go online in front of each of these parties. And also, you get a faster turnaround for the defendants to accept responsibility and pay their fines. And this turns into revenue, the dollars coming faster. And cases that we have so far, and you'll see the information sent to you, is a little over six days of a case turnaround. And that is from when the infraction has occurred to when it is paid. And if you're not using our system, what happens is you end up, you know, having come into court, getting out the docket, and that could be weeks and months. So turnaround time is very fast. There are some screens in here, that, just to give you a flavor of how it operates. So if you're looking at screen four, where the defendant online case review, this is where they log on, and they can use their phone, they can use a computer, I'm assuming, or tablets, like I have here. They go in and enter their basic information, submit, there's a bunch of little forms that we have in place for them to do that online easily. And then goes into the prosecutor. The prosecutor has a dashboard, kind of like you're into Fox through mail. And the prosecutor has a set of offers that may apply. They can select one or reject it, and do they need to go to traffic school or not. And then that goes into the judges or magistrates in box. And they basically approve or reject based on the recommendation that came in, set the fine amount, and then the litigant, the defendant is notified as to how to proceed. And warrants are the same way. If you look at slide seven, on a defendant to appear warrant that came in, putting on a payment plan so that warrant can be recalled, James can go about his business of paying what he owes, and does not have to worry about being arrested. And then the notifications go out to the defendant in slide eight. They can be a text that you get on your cell phone, or they can be an email that comes into your box on what to do for next steps, accept responsibility, and then go make your payments. And if we look at just the benefits here, that you'll see is that the docket is reduced, most tickets are paid. And so, it happens, even if the judge rejects it, or the prosecutor rejects it, these cases are not coming into the court because that defendant really has a voice that is heard, even though it's online versus coming into court and taking those resources. So the opportunity still exists for defendants to go through the process that exists today. And like I said earlier, there's clearly faster turnaround times, money comes in faster, and there's communication between the defendant and prosecutor and court that exists today, we're just really enhancing that capability ever forward. And you'll see the picture of Judge Kaya, in which she really got everyone together to, you know, across the different stakeholders to make this happen. And we've really been able to show the results as part of this, which is really great from a pilot standpoint, and are removing it out of the pilot standpoint. And the prosecutor's office, Assistant Prosecutor Barbara Hayward is funny, and great helping, and she really feels she makes better decisions because she has all the information in front of her. And clearly, for the defendant on the last slide that I have here, slide 14, is all about, it makes it easier for them to engage with the courts, they can resolve the issues, get on those barriers of why people don't come to court, and handle it online, and really increase their access to justice. So that, really, that's what the system is all about, that's running right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hare?
How many, I'm sure you're in other counties that might speak, probably, so we're not the initial.
You're one of the initials, one of the leaders, spearheading. There's one other court that was spearheading this, along with Judge Kaya and Juror Bay, and that was down in Washtenaw County. And then we started to expand into other counties now, but you guys were right on that.
I think that, you know, that looks like a great program, especially, as you said, I think for people that maybe get a speeding ticket, or just, you know, just, they don't have, like, so they don't have time to go to court. And, you know, from my viewpoint is that it's endorsed by one of our leading judges, of course, and the county and the prosecutors. And I would have to give a lot of merit based on that, you know, because they're the ones who, they're the people who deal with it every day. And, you know, I've been in that courthouse once, and you guys are there all the time. It's crazy there sometimes. That takes some of the traffic out of there. It makes it easier, I think, it could become a more efficient workplace, and that's the bottom line in the whole thing.
And I could just add, what we see too, the, this system is designed not for the repeat defendant. They're not going to make it through all of the parameters to get to this. But for the person, that this might be their first or second ticket, and they're going to school, or they're working, when they come down on a Thursday morning or a Friday morning, as you just indicated, they're piled up. I mean, there are just a lot of people down there. And they wait and wait so that they can either meet with the prosecutor, and then get in front, then they have turnaround time to get in front of the judge. And this makes it so much easier for them. And as MJ said, we're finding that people are paying these, even if, even if they get rejected, they're paying them. They're paying them. And then the important thing on the warrants, too, we have a lot of people that don't, they forget, and I know that's difficult to mention, that they forget to pay their fines and costs. So after so many notices, those go to mental. And then people, a lot, come into the court and pay it, because they don't want to get arrested. So they don't do anything about it. And then more fines, and things get added on. So this way, it offers them an opportunity to not have to worry about getting arrested. They can set up a payment plan right online, and they don't have to worry about that. So their job isn't in jeopardy. The same thing for those that get a letter that they, that they need to pay their fines, just a reminder letter. They can also go and take care of that. So there are just a ton of benefits. But it's, it's savings for, for the court. But, and then it brings in more money because the people that are inclined to use the system are inclined to pay. And then Ken's going to just address the one issue.
Oh, yes. And, you know, lawyers, I would imagine people don't get a lawyer for a speeding ticket or something, so you're really not cutting the lawyer out too much. I guess they could get the lawyer later on if they don't agree with the.
This, this doesn't have anything to do with whether or not they wish to hire an attorney, but I will tell you, the vast majority of people with these kinds of civil infractions, most of the time, they don't hire an attorney for that. They come in and talk to the prosecutor on their own. Now, some do, but this doesn't stop anybody. It doesn't hamper that ability to get an attorney call.
Anybody else? Did you, Judge Klyde, did Mr. Mead want to say something?
I was just gonna, the cost so far has been pretty minimal. And this year, I was just gonna say that we've been absorbing that cost within the system, and we're not asking for any special appropriation to address this counter.
I didn't really, I, you know, I think it's been a year. Actually, we've been utilizing it for years. What I had a question, and along those lines, it says, since Bay County participated in the development, there will be no startup fees incurred. Are there any annual fees to participate in this?
No, it's just the transaction fee. There's no annual fees that we charge.
And that's the five and $10, or 10%. And it says that, is this something that we have been, we have been liable for anyway, that transaction fee?
We have not up until this point, because the grant that funded this pilot project has covered their expenses.
Okay.
But now we're leaving the grant base on this pilot, and then moving into production.
And do we have a general idea what maybe this could?
What I looked at so far would have been 1,100 hours, that would have been the cost at this point.
And we're more efficient, and so that's gonna be?
Yes.
Okay, that's the questions that I have. Anybody else have, Bob?
Yeah, I was into a program that started three, four years ago, the Board Commissioners' Sheriff Department came forward and recommended going electronic ticketing. So that, in the, all of the law enforcement vehicles the county has is in their car, where they just take your driver's license and slide it through, and they can pick up your record, or everything they need to know about you right there. And automatically, when you enter the ticket, automatically goes to a district court computer. So this is all playing together, eliminating a lot of traffic at the courthouse.
And printed on that ticket is the web address for this Court Innovation Project, saying, go to this, visit this website and see if you're eligible for a reduction in your charge, or the charge. Yes?
Is it possible that these transit, transition fees or whatever can, would be charged to the person who is, or no?
No, you can't, we cannot, any extra fee that's not of statute.
I see.
One of the ways you can do things like that is you could try and increase the ticket cost. But it has to be every ticket, you can't single up anyone.
I see.
Some of those things might, over time, work their way out, because the state is wrestling with, like, am I trying to file one that they want courts to go to? And with that, some courts were charging a five-one fee, and I think one of the other pilots was trying out with this, and then the court said, no, we cannot.
Oh, okay, well, they, they were told.
The state is looking at, for projects like this, that there should be some kind of fee to allow people to do it. But at this point, they have, they have to change for us to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Commissioner Hare?
Do, is there any other mechanism out there that's educating the public, to, I can put it on a big three TV to say, okay, if you get a ticket, this is a new way of doing it that they kind of do?
That would be great. That would be great.
You know, if we could, you know, arrange that with a big three TV, and you could go through, read through your old slides, or whatever.
You allowing us this opportunity, we'll get it out to some people, so we appreciate that. And then it's at the bottom of the ticket. Cole Waterman's been very kind in putting a couple of articles in paper about it. But the more, even by word of mouth, that it gets out there, the better it will be.
Would we have a mine item that we could follow on an annual basis, just if you were interested to see what those costs would be? Or where would they be in your budget? So if we can, if somebody wanted to set up a new budget?
I'm not, we don't have any specific setup at this point.
But we will?
We have to work with finance on that. They don't know because of how the, well, I guess we'll, we'll be paying you the five after we can figure out, even our expenses, I'm not sure how that happens. So we could certainly work towards that.
Okay, thank you very much. Should nobody else has any other questions? Thank you.
Dawn, thank you.
Then, thank you. Our motion approved.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
We did.
I don't think we voted on.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. The next item of business would be the courthouse technologies. This is the juror service. Mr. Mead?
Yes. We're, we're asking for permission to move into a whole new arena with the jury system. The current system is one that was written in-house on the county's original AS400 many years ago. And the IT department has been working to try and move projects off of that system and onto more like third-party vendors. We did some research in, within court systems, and we like this courthouse technology as probably the best one out there right now. Several other counties in the state have begun to use it, including Sagana County, Washtenaw, Home are using it as others are. So in our, in doing this, we, the reason that the figures came a little bit later was that Julie Athens from IT, Ryan Endor for Brand Short, and I met via phone with the technical person on this. And because they can load it on our server, and it's a service fee that we would pay, a subscription fee, we don't have to add any real specialized computer hardware, except we would need a couple of laptops and bar readers. Because what would happen is, as a juror comes in, if they bring their letter or sign it with them, and it has a barcode on it, and we just click the thing, and we've got it handled, and they've arrived, and they're a juror today. If they don't, we'd have a printout we can select for that person. But what we're trying to do is move the court jury system into the 20th century, because currently, people, as I tried to outline, we currently use a two-step process, where we spend a lot of time mailing questionnaires, getting the bag processed, and mailing again. And so in the beginning there, you see that we spent $5,400 twice in mail postage cost, that we would eliminate and get down to, we could use bulk rate with the postal permit, because we could pre-sort the responses. And we also don't have to pay the data mail corp, who we currently use, to do that for us. So there's some savings in there. And then, obviously, the system, there's being able to use texting and things like that comes with a cost. New technology, the person goes online, determines whether they want to receive an email or a text from us. They can complete the questionnaire online. There's lots of advantages to that. They go back and look it up if they need to. They can also turn off, look for their employer to verify that they had service, that they completed service, or how many hours they were there. That's all now done electronically under this proposal. So what really costs is about $6,200 more per year. But the vendor requires, if you sign the contract, you have to pay the first year. So that's why we're asking for an additional allotment this year, the 23, or almost $54,000, to buy the equipment, pay for the training, and also the first year's subscription cost.
Commissioner, is the $18,000, 18 for, is that a yearly cost? Or is it one-time cost?
That's an annual cost.
Annual cost.
As is the $480 for the tax.
Commissioner, you get, you're done?
Yeah, I'm good. That's all. Thank you.
I've been through the jury process a few times, so, you know, calling in the night before is sort of a hassle, and with mobile phones and stuff like that, it'd be a lot easier for people to check and see.
It sure will, yes.
Sounds a lot easier.
Anybody else? Now, I know there's not an exception to, there's always an exception, who knows, folks that maybe not have access to the electronic.
We would still have to create our message. We use the county's phone system for that. So we would just continue to do that, because we will still have jurors that do not have smartphones or email accounts.
And the annual cost is, is going to be higher for this new system?
It's higher than the current data mail cost, but we save on the postage and things like that. So, yes, in total, it's a little bit more costly, but there's advantages to having this system. Plus, you know, the IT department right now has to maintain the software, and if their programmer retires them, they have to hire a programmer to make changes to the system and things like that. I don't have those costs with me, but that's part of the reality of it, too.
I think we all have this new handout with the additional cost on it. So.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any other questions in regards to this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mead.
We did.
Support. Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Our next order of business would be grants from the Family Drug and Juvenile Court, Juvenile Drug Court Program.
So moved.
Support. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. From the, under B, the Probate and Juvenile Court Administrator, this is a grant application for Family Dependency Drug Court and Juvenile Drug Court.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. From the Sheriff's Department, we have a replacement of a patrol vehicle.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. From, this is also from the Sheriff's Department, Bay County Emergency Management. This is a court security grant program for the Marine Patrol Board.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. From the prosecutor's office, this is Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, this is a new position, and I think there's some information there regarding wavering pay if they have met certain criteria.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Mid-State Health Network, this is an addendum to the intergovernmental agreement for the Oversight Policy Board. I see Mr. Chris Pinter's here. We need to, did you want to give us a little background in that, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks. I just wanted to, A, Bay County was the first county to pass this agreement back in January, we had Christmas. And subsequent to that, another county, Sagana County, requested some, like, what I believe to be minor changes. I shared this with Commissioner Craig, because he's on our authority board as well, and I told him that since Bay County did its business ahead of everyone else, I would be okay with you getting around to this maybe 2018 or 2019. But here it is on the agenda for this month, so I would just ask that, I appreciate the commission considering it so promptly, and the Bay Area Board certainly supports you approving that amendment.
Support. Moved and supported. Anybody have any questions? I've read it a couple of times, and there's not a lot, not much difference there, is there?
It's very minor.
All right, thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We have, under F, the Michigan Green Schools Coordinator, Gypsy Moth Program Coordinator, Michigan Green Schools, and Initiative Participation and School of Recognition.
So moved.
Support. Moved and support. Felicia, did you want to say anything?
I was gonna ask if it would be okay if we invited schools to the board meeting next week?
Sure.
And we'll have these types of tickets that are coming from the state, and patches, and possibly flags. Some schools water the bikes outside, they can do this.
Sounds good. Anybody else have any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. From the MSU Extension, this is from the District Coordinator, a revised work plan.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We have, under H, the Bay County Equalization, we have a proposed resolution. Kelly, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, as you can see, there is a slight decline in commercial and industrial. I just finished this report today, that's why you have a brand new product, the last week's proposed. Ag and res are increasing slightly. However, the good news is when we did an estimate for the budget, budget, or the proposal was 1.76 in the NIDA, and this is only 0.2. So it's a little better than anticipated.
Does anybody have any questions for? All right, thank you, ma'am.
I will have the reports and Department Commissioners meeting next week, where the commissioners decide.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions?
Motion.
We did a motion, we did not have that motion, okay.
Motion.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions, or, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. From the Health Director, we have Amendment Number One to the Fiscal Year 2014-2015 Agreement with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Number Two, we have Amendment Number Two to Fiscal Year 2014-15 Comprehensive Planning Budgeting and Contracting Agreement.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Anybody have any questions or discussion? Most of the time, we get these, Joel, we have increases. This one is a decrease, huh?
It's a decrease.
We expect, we anticipate that we're going to receive more funding through Medicaid full cost reimbursement this year. So that will offset some of the decreases we had in the Medical and Seizure Program. We also expect to see some increases in food licensing as well.
Don't do that.
We're seeing more business. We're not, well, we are charging more, but we're seeing more business.
Now, is that because of the deficit that the state has, and?
That is, these cuts are a direct result from the governor's executive order.
And then those additional dollars that come through the states?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody have any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Under G, from the Director of Environmental Affairs and Community Development, this is the acceptance of a contribution to purchase some Easy Docks out at the Bay City State Recreational Area. And this is accepting $14,400 from the Chamber and the Community Foundation to purchase.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Anybody have any questions? Laura, you, Laura's done a tremendous amount of good work out there, and we appreciate that as well, Laura. So, you have any questions, or we're good on that? All right, go ahead.
Since you provided an opening, I will say that we did get a 10% discount from Easy Dock. I want everyone to know that, because we got it ordering on, at least a order described on a timely basis. If I could, this, the resolution does say from the Chamber of Commerce, and it is the Chamber of Commerce Foundations, just so that everybody does know that.
Was it the Community Foundation?
The Community Foundation awarded a grant to the Chamber Foundation on behalf of the project that the county is leading for the boardwalk in the New Beach area out there.
Commissioner Hare?
Are they gonna fit this dock in, or, I've read some things, and it looks like everybody's still fighting out there over what you can do and what you can't do, which is normal for what goes on out there.
This particular dock system is basically what we have out there now, that goes out there. It's a seasonal dock, it'll need a permit, it's a general permit, just for a temporary placement, goes out in spring, gets pulled out in the, in the fall. This particular one will have a fly-out area with a bench, so there is a visual seating area for, which doesn't exist out there now. There is a gangway, I know somebody has to make sure we got a gangway so that it's accessible. But yeah, it will require a general permit, but no, I think, I think people are kind of mixing that up, I think, with the peer, the long-term vision that, you know, people are considering.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that. I mean, I think that's what people need to hear anyways. Commissioner Lex?
Where abouts the planned location?
The planned location for this, the boardwalk, remember, everyone, we were gonna put that out, straight out from the spray park, and then we were gonna have that beach area. This is not gonna go there. This is going to go, if you're, if you're at the deuce area and you're facing the bay, if you shimmy about 1,000 feet over to the right, there's an existing sand path that's called the Lake Access Way. Typically, it's been built Typically, it's been built for ice fishermen to get out to the bay. It's a sand path through the wetland areas. A lot of you, it's not typically, you can't drive on it in the summertime, only wintertime. But it, but because it's an established hard-packed ADA-accessible walkway, it will go out at the end of that thing, out in the water.
Yeah, we've had these for years. Beach Wellness, which was funded, bought four sections of these at the beach that Beach Wellness keeps clean now, and they'll take up to eight or 10-foot wave. And so that, there wasn't really a problem getting authorization to do these. So, these are, people seem to like them.
Yes.
We even got to DNR now that they'll take them all and put them in forests, so.
And I would then add that the reason this is system that was selected is because of the work that Beach Wellness, you, Commissioner Krieger, Bob Redmond had worked on, that did, were able to demonstrate that these, it's the same system, the EZ Dock system, that were able to demonstrate that it was effective, they're usable, they don't damage the, you know, the substrate of the bay. And DNR is, they found it easy to put in and put out, and so, yeah, this is, this is based on the same success of that system.
Laura, one of the last meetings that I attended, I thought they were discussing, you know, next to the lagoon, that bear track, that's not going there, right?
Yeah, no, it's not gonna go there. That's, in fact, I was out there a week ago, and I was out there yesterday morning, and that area right now is underwater. There was a lot of beaver activity towards that lower lagoon outlet. There's a lot of water that's been dispersed through there, so that sand path, just half of it's underwater right now.
And then are we gonna be able to groom that beach down there, where we're going to put that, those floating docks?
You know, at some, someday, we are working on that. I will say that the Corps of Engineers was up this past, about a week ago. They measured the area along the shoreline, 'cause there are areas along the shoreline that have deed restrictions placed over them. Keeping in mind, this is below the ordinary high-water line, this is below the ordinary high-water mark, which means part of it right now is underwater, but there is a deed restriction placed on that property at a number of locations that we will have to, you know, now that they've been identified and, you know, kind of revealed to, DNR wasn't really even clear about that, DNR Parks Group, now that we've identified what those are, now we begin the process to kind of address those things. And certainly that 1,000-foot of beach is still the goal, I hear that from DNR Parks as well, just yesterday, and so that is still the goal, so that's what everyone's working on.
I saw that article, good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Laura.
Thanks.
Did we get a motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. We have, under K, this is from the Project Manager of Buildings and Grounds, this is the Community Center Kitchen, final project update. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The kitchen is up and running, as everyone will know, there's a nice article and then a lot of nice pictures. The renovations on the inside of the existing facility, Riverside Center, are also complete. There's some nice pictures of the fireplace, the mantel, the wood floor, they're just, they did a real nice job. There's a lot of things right now, there's still a large punch list, a two-page punch list, and I looked over there yesterday, and they're still, they're doing it, little by little. This is, a lot of things can't, you know, have to wait until ground hardens up a little bit, Hydro seems to do some small grinding in the back, but it is, it's coming along. The, I also, and just so you know, that I threw a picture of our dump truck on, I don't know if everyone saw the dump truck that the board approved, and that's a 2006 Sterling, we got that for $48.5, and it's an automatic, too. It's really nice. So, I just wanted to share that with the board, too. And I think that, I know Tammy would like to make also, if anyone else has questions.
Thanks, Rick. I just wanted to welcome and invite everyone to our grand opening of the new facility. Yeah, I hope everyone received your invitation. Okay, wish, I have some extras. Tuesday, next Tuesday, 4:00, we're at our facility, of course, I can't wait to show it off. I would like you also to participate in the river cutting ceremony, which we're coordinating that with the Chamber of Commerce, so if you could please let me know when you plan out attendance, so I can return it on the deck, please.
Thank you, Tammy. Does anybody have any questions for Tammy or Rick? All right, thank you, guys. All right, it's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Motion to receive, support.
All right, let's do that, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. Under L, we have the Director of Recreation and Facilities, this is an agreement with Bay County Market, and I believe that's through the remainder of this year.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Commissioner Tilly?
Just wanna thank Amber for, and her staff for putting due diligence to get this, at least to go forward for this year.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lutz?
Yeah, I can thank Commissioner Tilly, and Kristen, and Amber for their efforts, and their committee. And we've met several times about this issue, because we want to make the county property the best we can, and we're trying to find the best uses for that. And we're gonna be going out later in the year with some more fees about potential uses in the future of that, so I really want to thank them and the staff for, you know, getting this together.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. We have the Boys and Girls Club's Summer Recreation Program.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. From the Recreational Manager, we have Civic Arena Youth Program, this is seeking approval of recreational youth hockey program for K through the fourth grade.
So moved.
So moved. Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Commissioner?
Just a great program, I already spoke to Brett about it, but that's what we have to do if you want to get these, you know, kids, you gotta get them young, you get them excited about something, no matter what it is, softball, baseball, so this is a good introduction into hockey, and we have a great facility there for them, so, good job.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. Number Two, we have from the Civic Arena, this is a helmet rental, an additional $2, helmet rental.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. From the Personnel Director, we have a renewal of professional services for the, for equalization.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. On our payables, we have a proposed resolution.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. From the Finance Officer, we have an analysis of the general fund equity for 2015. Motion to receive.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. And also, we have from the Executive, an Executive Director, 2007-11, motion to receive would be in order.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Lutz?
The Executive, the one from the Health Department, that was the only reduction so far that we've seen from the budget. Do you anticipate any more?
Probably not, based on the revenue estimating conference is coming up within the next month or so. And that would give us an indication if they think any further reductions.
Well, at this time, you don't think there's any sort of like, uh?
You know, if I could, Mr. Chair, the only, and I don't think it would ever become law, is that if Proposal One fails, the House Speaker's proposal from last year, they suggested that they would be able to fund fixing the roads with future revenue growth, which is a goofy idea, but the House may pass it. But I don't think the Governor would sign it.
All right, thanks, Tom. Does anybody else have any questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. Number Three, we have a post-audit and investigative functions.
Substitute.
Oh, yes, we do. I think we all have, I think that's ahead of, I think it's gone from $10,000 to $20,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, up to, yeah. Anybody have any questions in regards to that?
So moved.
So moved. Moved and supported. Any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. Does anybody have anything, any referrals? Unfinished business? Any new business? We have no closed session.
We do not.
Any miscellaneous?
There's a MAC conference last week, Mr. Hickner, Bob Redmond, and I were there. We heard a lot about Proposal One, a presentation on that. By the way, the Clerk's Office has a copy, some people have been asking, you know, what is the verbiage on it? It's down at the Clerk's Office, if you want to see what the proposal is before you go in and vote, there's a copy down there, and there's an explanation with it, too. If you want to look at it ahead of time, may fift to see, to vote on it. The government, Governor's spokesman was there, he was supporting it, John Walsh. And we had Mary Lou, Lou Ann Simon from Michigan State spoke to us, and they passed out some MAC legislative talking points. Revenue sharing continues to be monitored, there's, you know, budget processes going on. Unfunded mandates, there is some legislation coming through, they hope to get through this year for unfunded mandates. County oversight of road commissions, there's a sunset provision, they're trying to eliminate that. Merger of the Departments of Human Services and Community Health is being watched because of maybe reduction in services or funding. And then corrections reform, are the main things that they're working on right now, so lobbyists are working for us down there.
Anybody have any, they can make decisions on everything by raising taxes, and they want the public to raise the taxes so they're not attached to it, right?
I heard something today, you know, there's an earned income tax credit, and this was from Keith Markstrom, that's tied barred to the, to what's going through. And there's a lot of people that, that was eliminated a few years ago, and those are low-income people, that if that comes back into play, that they'll end up being ahead with the new taxes that come on, they'll still be ahead tax-wise. So that's just one of the, there's a lot of little minor, you know, things that are in there that people don't know, earned income tax credit, school funding is in there. There's pros and cons on both sides, so that's why everybody should take a look at it and listen to the debate. I think the city is gonna have a discussion on it next Monday that we're invited to.
All right. Bob?
There was also a session on the tax captures, and then there was one on equalization, how big-box stores are then appealing their taxes and winning the reduction, and, like, some of the 40, 60% reduction. All of this, all the presentations will be on the MAC website, when they finally show up on the MAC website, I'll email the board where you can see them.
And I went to one on Emergency Management Association, MIMO, I'll have to talk to Ryan about it, the handout.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Tilly, was your hand up?
Yeah, I've had a couple of phone calls from constituents in regards to the Imagination Station and the demolition of it, and the clay tiles, because they were, some were sponsors, some of the kids that worked on it, and their handprints are in those. And I've been in contact with the city today, and they are going to try and salvage those clay tiles and move those to the new station, wherever they may go with that one. And those tiles, if they can't salvage, they haven't made a decision on what they're going to do with them, whether they're gonna contact the people actually donating them to begin with, or, or what, but they're intended not to destroy them at this point in time. They're gonna try to get those back into play, or back into the hands of people who did contribute to them.
Sounds good. Does anybody else have anything that are miscellaneous? And there are announcements? And a motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries.
[inaudible]